Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you want to do that here in the back, you can go to the road to.
I don't get some candy. Well, we can, yeah, I would like to do that, to discuss personnel.
I'm going to the second session to discuss personnel.
She put the over report down for you here and it's simplified. It's much easier to understand what we've been doing.
We have in the bank right now $657,000. I'd look today to compare it to this time last year and we have almost $177,000 more right now than what we did last year in the bank. Now, we don't have outstanding checks, but it's, I feel a lot better this year about our financial situation than I did at this point last year. So as of right now, we do have more money in the bank. We are getting for this year on foundation funding, we're getting $381,000 more than what we got this year. So that will help. We just need to continue with the savings that we started and it's not very crazy spending money on this.
Now, $657, is that including federal funds or?
Yeah, well, it's all of our money and we are owed a little bit of federal.
I mean, but that $657, was there any federal funds included in that?
Well, federal you spend and they get reimbursed. So there's.
But as far as paying regular bills, there's only $657 available?
No, about $480,000 available.
Most of us have chief consent. Take your hand off the first item. Pose.
Yes, I had asked Mr. Horn to come and make a presentation to us about the services we get from the co-op as much for my edification as anybody. And so he's got a PowerPoint and you got the floor Brad.
Again, Brad Horn, Director of Wilbur D. Miles Education Service Co-op in BB. And we typically, I want to thank Dr. Hubble and the board for allowing me to come speak with you tonight. This is a, this can be a fairly long presentation, so if I get this from Mr. Cheek, I'll know I'm going a little bit long, okay? So don't hesitate. Don't hesitate to tell me. Typically, what we do is we invite the new superintendent, new superintendents in our co-op over to the co-op. We have our team there to present this information because they do. Dr. Hubble's coming from outside the co-op region. She's used to another co-op and this lets them know and their team when they bring them over what we can do to help them out, okay? So this is it. So there's some names in here. All of my team has a slide, five to 10 minutes. I'm going to be quick, I promise you, just to give you an idea of how we serve. So our purpose here, I think, is kind of twofold. Dr. Hubble had approached me about, is that, would you like me to approach the purchasing threshold now or you want to wait?
Yes, go ahead. I had asked Brad to kind of run a little survey for me of schools in our co-op area, what their superintendent is allowed to spend without board approval to kind of give me an idea of what I can ask y'all. So yes, I wish you would go.
Yes ma'am. And that actually came up, so I don't know if you know this, but we have, the co-ops have taken over the mentoring for new superintendents and new principals. So we actually had our training in High Springs the last two days. I'm just coming back from that. And this came up today. Mr. Byrd at Cabot brought it up and some new superintendents were talking about it. But that purchasing threshold, now mine, I'm going to come back to that. So this is, these are the results from our survey. Mine, when I was superintendent, was $5,000, okay? That was kind of a little antiquated because a lot of that is based on purchasing thresholds given by the state. So you know this, I don't want to insult your intelligence, but you have a bidding threshold mandated by the state. Federal and state's different. Federal is $10,000 you got to list his, but state you can go up to $26,000, I think now, okay? And some districts, Cabot allows full expenditure. He doesn't have to go to board approval for anything as long as he takes care of bidding process and his legal right. But there are districts, you can see here, I won't go into a lot of detail, but we didn't put districts or names, but $15,000 at one, $10,000, we got $2,500. And to be honest, Brooke, at this point, I don't even know which district this applies to. $26,500, $10,000, $20,000, $15,000, and then $25,700, $9,999, okay? So that's just for your information. Again, short of that, I know where I was at, if we had one of our big gym air conditioning units go down, I wouldn't have been able to fix it, maybe $5,000, without calling you in for me, okay? So just informational for Dr. Hubble.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You bet. But that's, that's actually there as an example more than anything for the collaboration that we can provide. Okay, so let me get started with the services. I included our mission statement there and I won't read it, but basically, my folks are going to do anything that Dr. Hubble needs as long as it's legal. As long as it's legal, we're going to do it for, okay? Example of that, I took over when COVID hit. One of our districts, I'll name it, it was Bald Knob. Their cafeteria had to shut down because every cafeteria staff had COVID. So I sent my literacy specialists, math, everybody went over there and we cooked and served for them, okay? So that's what I mean by what you need, we do. Now that, that, you know, maybe we should have been doing literacy at that time, but we felt the need and we thought we were taking care of kids. But anything the district needs, we do. One of the greatest examples of, in my opinion, what we do for our districts is provide collaboration time with job alike groups. I'll go into more detail later. But personally, as a superintendent, when I could sit on that board, we have a business meeting just like you do, but at the end, we have information. So I could hear Dr. Thurman, how he handled the situation. I may have already dealt with it and it did two things. One, if I handled it similarly, very validating, I felt like I was doing right. But if I handled it differently and it wasn't so good, I could think about that and come back and do it differently the next time. So 16 superintendents hear what the 17th's doing and it helps them out. And Dr. Hubble provides as much experience to our group as anybody in there, so it's of value to all of those job alike groups. But that's one example, that collaboration when superintendent has a question, we can kind of come together on. This slide is going to show you the value of the co-op to you. I do need to give you a little explanation on this. You should have seen this. This would have been, it's 2018, 2019. Say, let me explain that. We're required by statute to do a cost analysis, cost analysis for one-fifth of our districts every year. We are evaluated by the state every five years and this is part of it. We have to show that we give them a cost analysis to all of our superintendents and they've signed off on it. Now whether they show it to you is up to them. But 18, 19 was your last year, I believe. And this shows you the value. Now I'm going to break this down throughout this PowerPoint, you can put this slide here, in terms of each category. So there are four categories and then a total cost savings for the ESC, for participating, and also a total cost saving, savings for ADM, that's average daily membership, you know that, you're enrolled basically. So as we go through the slide, that list of services Dr. Hubble has for is each one of those categories. This is only the final table that the superintendent sees, okay? There's a lot of other information, but that tells you on the first column, the PD consortium, contracted PD and content specialists that are housed at my office saves the district $51,666. Now I want to point out here, no district in Arkansas by statute is required to participate with any co-op. So you could opt out of it, you could. Now, I do think in two years, this is just opinion, I think next fiscal session, there will be legislation written that indicates that every district has to participate possibly in Plaskett County, which does not belong to a co-op. Or it may be written that DNS schools just have to belong to a co-op. We don't know, but there's kind of some thought that it's going that direction. I'm going to go forward here. Next, next category is cost savings from ESC products and procurement. I'll speak about that more, but that's paper. We do your paper purchasing for you. Media releases and other services, the savings of $2,087. Cost savings for direct student services, that's going to be your early childhood special ed and hippee. You're probably familiar with those terms and we can talk something about that if you have questions. That's a big one, $132,000. Now, I know as superintendent, I kind of thought, man, I can do that. I can, I can take care of that. But what, that's early childhood side. What has to happen is my folks have to go out and find students that are not school age, that should receive special education services. We have to evaluate them and then we provide those services. So that's a big savings for you. And then the next one there, cost savings for admin services, which deals with my admin office and also job alike groups, $40,000. And then again, that total cost savings, $527, $125, $47. And then this is your cost per ADM. Now, when we do this cost analysis, it's not something that we come up with at the co-ops. None of our 15 has a hand in it. The state gives us a formula. All we do is plug our services provided into the spreadsheet and then it spits this out, okay? I will tell you that I don't think this is a perfect number. Can I say for sure that we're saving you $527,000? I can't. But the value that comes from this is when I compare the other districts that were analyzed the same year, and really what it boils down to, folks, is their engagement, okay? If Dr. Hubble is coming to my board meetings or our board meetings, right, then you're getting value out of it. If you're, if she's not coming, then I'll tell you, I won't say anywhere, but there have been instances for three years where the superintendent didn't come, wasn't at a single board meeting, okay? So no value's given there, right? But if you participate, and that goes all the way down to work sessions or training sessions that we have, if the district is participating, then you're going to get value out of it. Seems like that year you got value. All right. First category there, if you remember that table, professional development. Now, you probably know this, but you, each district in our co-op gives $100 per FTE. So every full-time educator, you send $100. Dr. Hubble and you send us $100 per FTE. Now, that's for certified only, but the catch is we also serve the classified staff and I'll talk about some of those job alike groups here, just even transportation gets served. Contracted professional development, that's when we bring a presenter in. Again, that's coming from your consortium that you participate in, PD. And then our content specialists fall in that category as well. That's state funded, so you, no money comes from the district. It's all given to us by the state. All right, so this is the part where I've got names on here. I'll burn through this pretty quickly, okay? But we do have a math specialist and any of your staff and your superintendent can call my math specialist and she will provide whatever you need. If it's resources, if it's kind of the model lesson, she'll do it. Next one there, should be science. It's literacy and dyslexia. Laura Nussery, she's been with us two years, doing a great job, but she provides that dyslexia support specifically. She's not, she's directed by the state not to go so much with literacy anymore because dyslexia is such a big, big item right now, but she will do literacy. Ben Carrigan is our science specialist. We stole him from Harding. He does a great job of science. So again, those three individuals, your folks and your superintendent can call any of those individuals and we will help you out with resources. All right, next, next item there is procurement. So you do participate in our paper purchasing, so we contact your admin assistant, I believe it comes through the admin assistant, for any information about how much paper the district wants to purchase. We're able to save you some money because we buy in bulk, more bulk than you would purchase. Cabot is the only district that doesn't participate because that's a tone animal and they save enough money by doing it themselves. But our other 16 districts, we can save them some money by purchasing that. We also take care of media release, should be a big, school lunch media release and school choice media release. We send that out. The district does pay for it, but you join with all of the, say, you join with Longo County Schools to, in that. So you're paying your portion out of four districts. And then paraprofessional testing, we provide that at the co-op at no cost. Teacher center, your folks, your teachers can come print, print things out or laminate things at no cost. And then community health nurse, there's a chin that's housed at our co-op. Some districts, I was guilty of this one, superintendent, I paid for first aid or CPR for my faculty. We have somebody there at the co-op, I just didn't know about it, that Dr. Hubble can call us and she'll come do CPR for your top faculty, okay? So that's an example of something you might could save some money that a lot of folks don't know. Next item there, Mr. Cheek, am I still okay?
You're good.
Next item there is for hippee, local leads, early childhood, migrant. And this is a big one. Now migrant, you've probably heard some talk about federal funds. Have y'all been discussing that at all? They're kind of.
Yes.
Okay. So migrant, we're thinking may only exist another year. Who's your migrant coordinator here? Oh, you don't participate? Okay, good deal. That's good because it's probably going away, right? But migrant is a piece of that. Early childhood, sped and hippee and then local leads. We don't carry you under local leads, we carry, actually, I think we do have Longo County. Now, we definitely have Plaskett County. But the early childhood, sped and hippee are two big programs. Hippee serves your, your home-based educators and your families. It provides curriculum for them and then early childhood, sped is your big cost savings. That's the one where I'm, I've got 40 staff members in early childhood, sped. Now the key here is that you're saving money because you don't need necessarily a full-time early childhood special ed teacher, but you share that through us with other co-ops. That, a lot of that is pass-through money. So the state sends you EIDT money in federal and state funds, sends it to you and then Dr. Hubble gets approval and sends it to us, so we provide those services. All right, next item here, let's, hippee, that was Jason Clark. Local leads is a program that we started this year that serves daycares, provides curriculum to daycares. Get them ready. Get those students ready for the childhood I just spoke about. Migrant, again, that's a good program, but it probably looks at a high suspect. And then admin services. To me, this is a big one. I say only, that's a pretty good chunk of money for the district. But this is where our job alike groups come in. Dr. Hubble attended our work session and I hope she gleaned some information from our folks and I know she provided some at that work session. But we have several job alike groups. I'll just go next slide. Assistant superintendent, curriculum coordinators, federal coordinators, principals and sped supervisors. What we do is we bring those individuals into meetings once a month and they're able to talk about issues that they're dealing with at their district and collaborate with other folks. I think that's a huge service that we provide. But we also act as a liaison between the state and those groups, so we can push information out to them that the state gives us to provide. Technology coordinator, Brooke Singletary, she actually meets with your library media specialist, I think monthly, but it may be quarterly. And then she's also working on some testing. Library media, there's the library media specialists. Business managers, I started that two years ago with AAEA, Sharon, you know Sharon, started doing that because I think you guys picked the day that's on my board meetings. They were meeting, if you came to it, they were meeting up in my office while we were having the board meeting. But we do provide that collaboration time and information service to everybody. Transportation directors, I started that last year, meet quarterly with your transportation directors. I actually came over and, because they started the curriculum, if you know that, I don't know if you know that or not, where it was already tough enough to get a bus driver, but the Fed decided we need to do another curriculum to get certified. So we purchased a curriculum so that your transportation director could get them enrolled and I actually came over and sat down with your transportation director and kind of helped him get going with it. Advanced learning specialists. This one has been in question and you may have had discussion about it. And I'm, I'm going to spend a little more time on this, but when, say, two years ago, our board decided to do strategic planning during the summer, actually it was last summer, summer before this one. And I called Secretary Leva and met with him over spring break and I told him, look, my board's fixing to tell me what they want the co-op to look like, but I need you to tell me, is that okay? Are you and legislators going to change it? Because I don't want them to tell me something and then you say something else. He said, Brad, you need to concentrate on accelerated learning. And what he meant by that was not GT. When I hear accelerated learning, and y'all may agree, I think GT, gifted and talented, which Brad Horn ever guided him by too when he was in cabin school. But really, what he was talking about was accelerated, accelerated learning for all students, even the Brad Horns in the board, okay? So I'm not as smart as other kids in my grade, but I need to be accelerated to get, teachers need to accelerate me to get me up to that point. So what I've asked Jennifer to do, she was a GT specialist, but we converted that into accelerated learning, so it's, it's a consortium funded position. And what she's done, I've asked her to push into the counselor group because as a high school principal, my counselor did a lot of my planning, my master scheduling, and she was the one that said, hey, we need AP or we need Cambridge or something like that offered at this level. So we started the counselor job alike group and that's been very valuable. So I'm going to go back to this, or what I said at the beginning about engagement. She sends those emails and folks may say, hey, we've never heard of that person, we don't even know who that is. But when that's happened, I've gone back and asked her for documentation. She's actually sent the emails and given the information, but some individuals have never been to a meeting, okay? So that goes back to if you engage, if the district engaged, district level leadership causes teachers to engage and building level makes teachers engage, that's where you're going to get the value. But this is, this is a good program. We're only one year in, we're working the bugs out of it, so we have some speed bumps to get past, but we're getting there. And I do appreciate the district participating in that. I think you'll find a lot of that. Mentoring program, that serves all of your novice teachers and it also helps to get folks certified that are, are not currently certified. And then this one is new, so we've taken, from AAEA, I mentioned this at the beginning, we've taken over the beginning principal mentoring. So if you, do you have new principals this year? No, no new head principals. Okay, so nobody will participate in that, but this is the piece that even if, even if you don't participate with a co-op, building level principal and superintendent mentoring is required. Those folks have to come in. Dr. Hubble kind of skirted past it because she did it in her past season of life, right? She doesn't have to attend it, but I talked to her before the meeting and she said she kind of liked it, which is a good thing, probably all 17 of ours.
So things change so much every year.
Yes ma'am, absolutely. So that's our principal group and then our superintendent group is next. And I'll be doing the superintendent group, Brandon Hardeston will be doing the principal group. And then future options, just something that you may at some point want to talk about. I don't know if behavior is an issue at England, but our districts, the other 16 are experiencing some major issues with behavior. So we started a behavior consortium. Five schools participate. Your neighbor next door, Carlisle does. I hired a coordinator, Kristy Gibson, and then a coach, Jenny Ray, and they step in. They're not there to help with behaviors for specific kids, but to come in and observe and kind of coach those teachers in dealing with those behaviors. So it's a good program, but it is, again, it's consortium funded, so they've got to buy interest. And then career and tech, you guys do participate in that, but it's optional. That's the CT program and we've provided some pretty good equipment. And then what's the district? Upcoming job likes, I mentioned that I started a transportation group. So this year, we're starting a facility and safety, which will probably be the same group meeting and then also a maintenance director group, we'll start this year. All right, I burnt through pretty quick, Mr. Cheek. Y'all have any questions? Just reach it from the room. I've reached it for you. Any questions?
Brad, thank you for coming.
Yes ma'am, you bet. You bet. It's good seeing everybody. Hey, and I do want to mention, just going, engaging, I mentioned, I'm sorry for jumping back in. She actually came over and sat with our team in my office for, I want to say, my, probably three or four hours.
I think it was two or three hours.
But we had a good discussion and that's, that's what's going to help you out, right? Engaging and collaborating.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you all. Thank you for not getting me on camera.
Principals reports, who wants to start? Do you have a list?
I do have a list.
That's an inside joke.
Sorry.
Leadership.
I'm going to do better about that. Elementary current enrollment is at 327. We ended the year at 350, so that's a difference of 23 students. And where did those students go? We had a sixth grade class that's leaving of 55. We have an incoming kindergarten class of only 35, so that's a difference of 20 kids. So that's the majority of your kids right there. It's just a really small kindergarten year and we have beat every bush that we can find in England. We have put it on Facebook, we have sent texts, we have put it everywhere we can think of. We did a kindergarten camp to try to get, you know, as many kids as we can. I feel like we'll have a few more enroll. A lot of people wait until school starts to bring them, but we're not going to have anywhere near what we had leaving in sixth grade coming up. It's just going to be a smaller group. And then pre-K is at 13. We have 15 spots. As soon as the new pre-K director is hired, she'll go in and she'll fill those last two spots, so that'll be two more kids in our camp. Maintenance is just continuing at EES and we had a little bit of a slow start, but it's really ramped up. The building's looking really nice. I just want to say, Mr. Woods, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Jay, like they are working so hard getting our building ready and so just wanted to give them a brag. July 8th and 9th, we had kindergarten camp, 19 students attended and I attached some pictures. The one at the very end is my favorite where they made the old hats and they're just adorable. So we had 19 kids out of the 35 came to kindergarten camp. July 10th, we had the EES summer book bus. We had several stops in the community that we made. We had quite a lot of kids come to the bus. We were impressed with how many came. We hope to do it again one more time before school starts and maybe we'll have even more. I put in some pictures of that also. And then I gave you a breakdown of our class size. You can see that pre-K is 13, it will be 15, like I said, after the pre-K director gets her numbers in. We'll have two kindergarten classes, 17 in each. We'll have three first grade classes. Right now, we're at 16, 16 and 16 in those classes. Second grade, we have 20 and 20. Third grade, we have 19 and 18. Fourth grade, we have 18, 16 and 17. There's a change on your page for fifth grade. It was a 25 and 21 and we were able to switch a student and kind of even that up, so we're at 22 and 22. And then sixth grade, we're at 22 and 22. We have nine additional students in our sub-contained class and three additional students in our ALA. Any questions for the elementary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brittany.
A little short and sweet. Our total number of students enrolled at the high school is 280, which is the same as last month. Teachers could spend their summer engaged in PG at the co-op and on campus. We kicked off our first roaring through summer nights on July 1st and the evening to our large crowd and everyone enjoyed water games and movies, several vendors, popcorn and drinks and things. We had a lot of people there for seven nights. July 8th, we hosted our second roaring through the summer nights event with English, math and science at the library and enjoyed watermelon that was grown in our EHS greenhouse. The Atlas scores have been received and a copy of those have been placed in your pocket. Ms. Brittany's going to go over those with y'all later on. Tonight, we had AI, we did one up book night for parents and students in the library as our third roaring through the summer nights event. And then I have our enrollment trans down.
Now, I understand we have quite a few more going out for football at senior high. Do you have any figures on that? Well, that's okay, but I understand it. The coach came over this morning and he was telling me he thought there were about 23 maybe. Does that sound about right?
It sounds about right.
That's accurate, okay. Well, I was pleased with that. Okay, thank you, Brittany.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, on the superintendent updates, we have several things to go over. Act 902 requires us to have a public comment portion of our board meeting. At 5:45, we're supposed to have this sign-up sheet out and they have to sign up between 5:45 and 6 o'clock in order to speak. And I believe they get three minutes and they have to live in the district, they have to, what else do we have?
Be an employee or parent.
Employee or parent, okay.
It has to be regarding an agenda.
Yes, so they have to come and sign up. That's a new thing. And I gave the president here the thing that he reads if, if we have somebody who wants to comment, but we didn't have anybody tonight. The next thing I wanted to talk with you about, we got the Atlas scores and Belinda has prepared a little handout for you comparing the 24 scores with the 25 scores. So she's going to pass those out to you now and talk briefly with you about that.
We did have some improvements, especially in our advanced categories, which is a blessing. and some of our proficiency group also, so we're hopeful.
Oh, that looks nice colored and everything.
I'll let y'all kinda look through that, but some of the highlights. So we increased from five to twelve percent in advanced in grade eight in science. That's a big increase. And then we did have a small increase in proficiency also. We had some upward gains in math in grade eight and seven, too. Again, we increased in advanced in grade seven and eight. Those are gonna give us achievement points. Now, the report cards are not out, those won't be out till September, October. This is just the raw data that's been put in the Atlas portal.
This is all they've released us thus far?
Yes, all they've released. They haven't even released growth data. So this is literally just your achievement data right now, just in the portal raw. Now, I just took it and analyzed it and compared it.
Well, I thank you.
You're welcome.
Y'all have any questions for Belinda? Okay. On the AR app summary of revisions that we have to turn in, they said that our report was good. We have no revisions, so we can knock that off our list. It's always good to get that word from ADE, but they don't need any revision. Updates on our federal funding that Brad kinda touched on. I'm gonna ask Belinda again to talk about that a little bit since she handles our federal money. So you're up again, Belinda.
Thank you. Um, so the federal government has put on hold or under review, they're calling it, some federal programs. Only two of those pertain to England will only get two of those funds. That's our Title II-A and our Title IV-A. Now, they've only put a hold on the new allocations. The carryover balances are still available to us to spend. And under II-A, we have sixteen thousand in carryover that we'll be able to use along with our PD funds. So we'll be fine in that category, perfectly fine. Title IV-A, I always transferred it into Title I anyway, so we can use it under the same rules and regulations as Title I. So again, if there were two federal programs that they were gonna put on hold, I guess, that was really too best, you know, as far as not hurting us.
It could be worse.
Yeah, it could be worse. There were several funds, but luckily for us, it only affected two of our categories. We're still getting our business, which is Title I. We should get an increase in that and we should get an increase in ESA. That's not federal, but it's state categorical, but that's our big one that we use to pay a lot of salaries out of.
Got questions? Thank you, ma'am. Now, you all have homework between now and the next meeting. We have guidance on the new Maternity Relief Act that was passed. And I have this, it's Blue Ink. What I need you to do is read through it before the next board meeting and then we will have to decide which of these options we're going to adopt. So I just want you to read through it and, you know, kinda be prepared for that next time. We have an MOU with UALR, which simply gives our faculty and staff a deep discount on tuition if they're gonna go. So it's one of those things that only helps us, so I would ask you to please accept that MOU with UALR.
Someone make a motion to approve the MOU with UALR? Mr. John, all the folks say aye?
Okay, we have another MOU with UA Phillips County Community College for our concurrent credit. Now, that is a program that is very popular with parents. If your child is of a mind to, they can come out of here with how many hours? Three.
Associate degree, yeah.
An associate's degree, yeah, I thought so. Okay, so, you know, that's a big win for us. So I would certainly encourage you to accept the MOU with Phillips County. Okay, you all have already approved the MOU with the Lonon County Sheriff's Department, but I just wanted to let you know that the quorum court accepted that, so we're... No, that's just for your information. And there had been some kind of controversy about cafeteria and custodial workers having to take a hepatitis shot, but they sent out a directive from ADE that we do not have to have them vaccinated for hepatitis. So that's good and I just wanted to let you know. And we have an issue with some pests. Poor Lisa had to clean rat droppings off of her, mouse droppings off her desk every day and we called pest control people and they put some blue traps out. Now, I haven't seen any. Have y'all seen any more since then? Okay. But now, high school has got some rats, not mice, rats that are dented up in the top air. And I have instructed my principals to stay on maintenance to keep it clean because those rats have to have something to eat or they wouldn't be there. So, you know, they chewed some cords into, but they don't get any nutrition out of that. They're doing some damage. So we've got pest control people on it and the rats gotta go. That's just all there is to it. If I saw one of those things out of that, I'd do it. Well, that works, but they're ruining our electronics. They chewed several things into it, so we need to get rid of them. I am encouraged about our finances. I had Mr. Norman Hill, who's a well-known financial consultant all over Arkansas, here this morning, and he told us that we would end in the black and we would not have to borrow money to make it through the year. Now, that does not mean we can go out and spend wildly, but I've told everybody that instead of being on a steak diet, we're gonna be on bologna, miracle whip, and white light bread this year. Well, I like bologna, but you know. We're gonna still have to be careful, but I was very relieved that we're going to make the year. And we have worked in leadership team, we're having a leadership meeting every week and I think that has been great, a great way to inform me of things that are going on, to keep us on the same page and to keep things at the forefront that are important. And I have told everybody that, you know, we have three great missions this year. We have a lot of missions, but these are three big ones. Get the finances straightened up, to get rid of that D on the school report card at the high school, and to keep this place clean. We may be poor and eating bologna sandwiches on white light bread, but we can be plenty and we're gonna do that. And I have instructed my principals to stay on the maintenance staff about that. As principals, that is something you are supposed to do. So we want to take care of what we have. And I put this here for you. You can take these classes by Zoom if you want to. This is the ASBA Leadership Institute at Fox Springs. You can do it in person or you can do it on Zoom. And, you know, I appreciate all of my faculty and staff who've helped me get my feet on the ground. I have a wonderful central office staff here. I appreciate all of you board members for helping me kinda get my feet on the ground and I think we're gonna be okay. Well, yeah. We're going to add...
Make a motion to suspend the rule or add a...
Yeah, I need to make a motion to suspend the rule to add some, add it to the agenda.
I will, yes, sir, I will. We're gonna do the add two step right here. Okay, we hired an LPN because that was a great savings to us. You only have to have one RN and they do the paperwork, but you can hire the second nurses in LPN. We did not have a salary schedule, so we have one here and I would like to ask you to adopt this salary schedule for an LPN. It starts out at twenty-eight-three.
Motion by Scott GDC.
Motion by Scott GDC.
And then we have two orders that are kind of large, but these are things we're gonna have to have to get schools started and I believe both of these are paid out of federal money. We have one here that is seven thousand fifty-two forty-four. It's student workbooks and learning modules. It's itemized here.
We have three, I don't know if those are the elementary ones, but we have our written wisdom reading workbooks. I believe that's the seven thousand dollar one.
That sounds right.
Then we have a ninety-five... Yes, sir. That's for student workbooks for our literacy curriculum and our online modules for our teachers.
That's a bunch of modules and books?
Yes, sir.
And we wanted to get that done at this board meeting, so we could get our security. Here, here.
Literacy workbook, so I'll make a motion for a purchase order for literacy workbooks. From Title I funding charges for the amount of seven thousand fifty-two dollars and forty-four cents.
And Ms. Belinda said that needs to also say ESA, Title I and ESA.
Title I and ESA.
And then the other two, if they say ninety-five percent group or foundations, those are our phonics workbooks for our kids.
Who else is clearly speaking?
Here's one for a purchase order. What's this one? This one is for six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars. Clearly speaking? Where's that come out of? Federal?
It's probably sixty or Medicaid, that is speech.
Okay, this is a special ed and I believe that speech, the kids that receive speech, this pays the speech.
It'll come out of a federal fund. It'll either come out of Medicaid or sixty.
Does he just say federal when he's announcing? You can say just federal.
I have another motion for... Oh, yeah, I see it. Clearly speaking, purchase order for six two hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents of our federal funds.
Motion by Scott GDC. A motion first?
Yeah, we need to appoint me as the England School District Ex officio officer. And then I need you all to appoint me as England School District representative for the Wilberdy Mills Co-op and I have a form at the end of the meeting that you need to sign. Oh, yeah, well, I called Lucas Harder and I got the model policy and of course we've kinda tweaked it to our needs. Now, I'll tell y'all, a lot of school districts are buying these pouches, but we don't have the money to do that. They're not supposed to be bringing them to school, leave them at home. To me, it's just that simple. I'm gonna have each of the principals tell you, you know, what we're gonna do as far as consequences if they bring them to school. But this is not us, this is the law. And some of you, I've shared my experience with the video went viral with Fordis because some kids filmed the fight. They're nothing but a distraction at school. I know that we'll probably have to make some exemptions if, say, we have a diabetic child who uses their phone to check their glucose. We'll do those things, but a lot of bullying goes on with those things. Nothing goes on good with them at school. I hardly agree that cell phones do not need to be at school. Kami, you wanna just briefly tell us your consequences, how you're gonna do that?
I'm gonna go ahead if that's, if it's okay with you guys. I'm not ready to do the handbook yet, it's not time, but the cell phone policy is at the end of this, if you guys wanna look at it. Just the one, now the high school and the elementary are adopting the same cell phone policy, but our discipline, our consequences for it are just a little bit different. And I think that's just fair based on the age of our kids.
Yes.
You know, elementary, we're learning and high school, we should know and so the discipline reflects that. But the discipline for the elementary, I believe it's on like the last or next to the last page in that handout that I gave you. And it's up at the top. First offense is confiscation of the device when they have ISS and the parent or guardian must pick up the device from school. If they refuse to surrender, we normally don't have that problem at elementary, but if they do, that's three days of ISS. And in the second, and in future offense, the student will be subject to consequences for repeated violation. The device will be confiscated, a minimum of two days of ISS. The parent or guardian must pick up the device and the student will not bring the device back to school. And then the last little bullet there says a student will lose the ability to bring a cell phone to school if they're found to be using their phone or their device that's used to record or upload any video to social media during the day unless authorized by school administration. So what we're saying in the past was powered off in your backpack and we're still saying, don't bring, but if you do, powered off in your backpack. And then these are the consequences if you, if you have it out, if it's open.
So it is gonna be acceptable, bring it to school?
Well, no, it's not gonna be acceptable, but we're not going to do an illegal search of the backpack or purse. We're gonna tell them, if we see it, we're taking it. So you better have it on silent and outside. Now, if a kid is walking down the hall and his backpack starts ringing, yes, we can say, okay, your backpack. But, you know, my thing is, some districts are letting them have it at lunch in between classes. No, 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 that will not work. They need to just not have them. People are absolutely addicted to those things. They can't sit through church without, you know, doing this. And, and parents will say, well, what if I have an emergency? Well, if you have an emergency, call us and we'll, we'll take the proper steps. I just think that this is probably going to be pretty hard the first few weeks, but we're just gonna have to persevere. But with our financial situation, I'm not for buying those expensive pouches. That's going to take a lot of our time collecting those things. It's gonna take a lot of our time passing them back out.
And we're gonna have to police all that?
Yeah, that's right. It's just simple as this, don't bring them to school. And if we see it, we're gonna take it. If we see the corner sticking out of your pocket, we're gonna take it.
I mean, I guess they can leave them in the corner, I mean...
Well, they can, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying like...
For the ones that drive.
Like for Coach Morgan, I know he coaches basketball. You take a whole bus of basketball kids to somewhere else and they get back, they're gonna have to call their parents, come pick them up or something. So I mean, you're gonna let them in school and all line up to call out or...
Yeah, well, we're going to be reasonable about it, but just during the instructional day, they don't make... So many discipline problems arise from those things and kids will do stuff that you would not even believe with those phones. I'm not even smart enough to do it. I just, you know, make calls on the phone.
Longer and longer, you put your earbuds in and got it right in front of music in their pocket and you can't see the earbud in their ear, so...
And we're gonna have to really enforce not wearing a hood up because that obscures those things, or caps, or anything like that. It's gonna be tough sledding the first few weeks, but we're gonna have to stick to our guns and do it. I think it's a good law, and I'm glad that passed.
So we're going by the, what does the state of policy say? Nothing, no, no ring will give us that?
Oh, you'll just have to read through it, it's lengthy.
Are we gonna approve this tonight, or?
Well, we can approve it next meeting if y'all wanna read through it, and, you know...
Next meeting is after school starts.
Oh, that's right. Schools gonna start, we probably didn't want to get it tonight.
This is just model policy, and we added more disciplinary actions, and that's it.
Yeah, Lucas Harder said that too.
This is model policy we get from the school board, the state.
Don't y'all have your own policy committee?
For personnel policies, yes.
And for this?
For this, we, this is not have to be approved by personnel policies, this is just one of the handbook, this is student handbook.
Y'all got handbook policy?
Yes, this is the handbook policy.
The content, the verbiage, it's exactly what the state laid out as the standard policy, they just added what we're gonna do for this.
Yeah. Lucas Harder is a lawyer for ASBA, he's the blind guy, you may know him, but he sends out the model policy, and you can bet it's legally sound. He's good at what he does.
So what will be the policy for after-school activities such as a basketball game? Will they be able to bring the phone up?
When that last bell rings, they can have that. But I am gonna tell last-period teachers, don't start this stuff with, well, we'll stop fifteen minutes early and you can use your phone. We're not gonna start that. So that'll get out of hand quick.
Do we have last period?
Yes, so the last bell, and then when that bell rings, they can have that.
Does it have that excepting in there from medical?
Yes, that's in the law.
Yeah, Lucas fixed that for us. But, yeah, there'll be some exceptions, and certainly we'll be reasonable about that, but I think it's going to help our instructional day law. Kids are hooked on those things.
You wanna make a motion to approve the district's cell phone policy, is it written? So move it, Mr. General, please say it. Second, by Mr. Adams. All of the flag, say aye. I oppose, five vote.
Okay, we are doing handbook revisions tonight. Brittany, you wanna go first? I've been letting Kami go first, I'll let you go first.
You were going with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, this is kind of lengthy, I apologize, but I spent several days going through our handbook and checking all of the Arkansas School Board Association model policies and correcting ours to match. So there is a lot in here, but first, I just, of course, updated the names and contacts and table of contents, which also updated all of the page numbers to make it correct. This is not the full handbook, but if you want the full handbook, I can get it too. But it is a hundred and twenty pages, so I did not want to print this.
These are just revisions.
This is just revision. The first set are building level changes, and first is summer school, we don't offer summer school at the high school, we don't have anyone to teach it, we don't have a curriculum to use unless it's sedimental, and if they want to take a summer class, they can do it on virtual Arkansas during the summer. We are closed campus, and so we added that students cannot check out and check back in unless they have documentation, so they can't just check out and run home because they want to, because they don't wanna go to that class and they come back without some kind of documentation like the doctor. Three point seven attendance requirement, senior early dismissal, seniors are only allowed to leave campus early if they're in a continuing education program, and that would be after a certain time, I believe it's after fifth period. Three point seven point one attendance policy, added if a student checks out prior to the last ten minutes of class and they're counted absent, so if they check out before those ten minutes, then they're counted absent, just like if they go, come into class ten minutes after the tardy bell, then they're counted absent.
I take it that's been a problem?
Yes, yes. Tardies, we have all our kids that want to go to the bathroom in between classes and just say, I was in the bathroom, or whatever, without going to talking to their teachers first, so if they go to class late, then they will automatically be given lunch deagle, just trying to get those to class as soon as the bell rings. The disciplinary offenses with minimum and maximums, we added the electronic device policy to that, recording audio, video, and taking photos without permission, and updated the possession for use of tobacco to clip eggs, patches, and pouches, because that was not in there. Four point twelve merit distinction diploma requirements, I think we talked about that a couple of meetings ago, where they can take concurrent credit and get a, you know, certain pathway that career and technical pathway, that they can get merit toward distinction diploma, and it's just, it's aligned with DSSY Success Ready Graduation Diploma Tops. Five point eight dances, we updated the rules to align with prom because it did not have all of the rules that prom had. Five point ten, homecoming, we just have fit dress guidelines because those were not in there, so we were having to constantly decide what they needed to wear when they could wear. And all of the rest of the policies, all two and a half pages are just to be updated per ASBA model policy. Would you like me to read your policies?
Brittany, if you like.
Any questions?
Wait a minute, I changed my...
Have to take breaks. Thank you.
Okay, do we want to read? I would ask that you accept these revisions to the student handbook at high school.
So I'll make a motion to approve the England High School twenty-five, twenty-six student handbook policy change request. So move it, Mr. Adams, please say it. Second, by Mr. General, this is all the flag, say aye. I oppose.
Okay, Kami, you're up.
So I gave you guys something that has just little highlights on it, anything highlighted is something that was changed. The main things were like board member names, twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, the superintendent's name, our LEA change, so anywhere there was anything about five-oh-four or special ed, I had to change that person's name, so those were just little things. And then we just had four model policies to change. Title nine, which is the sexual harassment policy, the smart four graduation requirements, even though that's high school, it's required to be in the elementary handbook also, the bell-to-bell no cell policy, and then student use of AI, and all four of those are just model policies, like Ms. Brittany said, that we're just adopting because they, the law changed and we needed to change ours, and those were the only changes we had with the elementary handbook.
Well, I would ask you to approve these revisions of the elementary handbook.
So I'll make a motion to approve the revisions of the England Elementary twenty-five, twenty-six school year handbook revisions. Mr. Trish Karl, please say it. Second. Second class, by Scott G. on the flag, say aye. I oppose.
Okay, we move next into bids. We didn't have to have paper this year, we have enough stockpile, so we didn't have to get a paper bid. Micah, you wanna come up and do the milk and the food?
Like the ransom issue, check them out.
Yeah, really.
Okay, since we went to self-help this year, instead of having a food service management company, I had to go around and get bids. We only got one bid for milk, and that's from Highland. I can pass it around and let y'all look. Then for our vendor bid, which is our food, we...
Is your bread in?
My bread is in with my vendor bids. We have Benny Keith and Cisco. I have copies of those for you. I went through on my personal copy and highlighted everything that was cheaper. Cisco was the cheaper company to go with for all of our food.
Did you change with the co-op?
We posted this, we advertised.
We could have saved on there, we don't even know.
Look, I posted it, they contacted, I sent, and they re-sent. So if y'all wanna look at them, y'all can, but I'm telling you Cisco was the cheaper one.
I trust you.
Milk, we only have one. Our bread is in with our vendor, which has all of our food.
Because I know typically, there was only, there was two people having bread from the whole state of Arkansas, one covered some and some covered the other, and they didn't cross around, so they didn't have to...
Cisco and Benny Keith will both deliver all the bread, either one. In the past with, when we had OPA, we used Benny Keith. So they sent me line-by-line itemized costs for every item that we would like to purchase, so I went line-by-line and checked to see which one was cheaper, and Cisco was the one that was cheaper. Here are the...
Benny Keith from Cisco here?
Yes.
Their chain co-op?
No. It's line-by-line on each one.
Cisco and Benny Keith are both good.
They're both great. I just went by cost because I know we have been in a financial situation and are trying to save as much money as possible. Cisco has the lower bids. Do I need to do my own code one too right now? So when we had OPA, they had our salad bars and everything at the high school, they took all of that when they left. So we need a new salad bar at the high school.
Is that the cold food, soda counter?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes, Amco.
Well, I would ask you to accept the milk bid for the cafeteria from Highland Dairy.
So I'll make a motion to approve the milk bid for Highland Dairy.
Forty-two cents, forty-seven cents a carton.
Got the one four zero, that was just forty cents a... Come like the one percent white?
Well, we have to offer two flavored and one non-fat, so it would be forty cents. If I get younger from them, that's how much it would be, but I've added on the vendor bids. But they would offer us the one percent strawberry, one percent white, and fat-free white, and one percent chocolate.
I'd drop it all except the chocolate.
I can't. I have to offer those.
You should have made a motion to approve the milk bids and all of that.
Yes.
So make a motion to approve the bid for Highland Dairy food for milk for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Motion by Scott G. please say it. Second, by Mr. Trish Karl, this is all the flag, say aye. I oppose. Five vote. Hey, as far as the menu, I mean, here we go with that, I mean, I know you did it last year, but is, I mean, is it gonna meet the state requirements as far as...
Yes, that was the healthy pro system that y'all voted on last meeting. I've already started building the menus for the next school year, and I'm doing a six-week cycle menu, so it'll rotate every six weeks and come back in. That's why I have to have the vendor bids to know where I'm ordering my food from.
So you'll know I don't like broccoli.
And unsweetened.
And I like unsweetened.
Bread's in with Cisco.
Yeah. And I would ask you to approve the food bid for the cafeteria with Cisco, since it's the cheaper of the two, and they're both good companies.
So move it. Motion by Mr. General, please say it. Second, by Mr. Adams, all the flag, say aye. I oppose. Five vote. What about this food? Are we really doing salads?
Yes, we're doing salads every day.
They really do, I'm surprised at that. They love a salad bar, and Angie has determined that we can pay for this out of our MAC money, and so...
The one I would prefer is this one right here. That is what we're used to, and it has the different bins where I can put stuff in it. So our salad bar at the high school consists of a salad, fruit, and vegetables that they get to pick from every day, what they would like.
Does someone serve them, or do they...
They get to self-serve that, because we're offer versus serve, all schools are offer versus serve at the high school. Now, if we weren't offer versus serve, and we served everything on the line, we wouldn't need this. But high school level, we do offer versus serve, so they can pick what fruit they want, what vegetable they want, if they want a salad.
With their hands?
No, we have scoops and all.
Does the food come from Amco, or does it come from Cisco?
It's gonna come from Cisco, it's just the...
So this is just the... I know you're like a math teacher, add all that up, and then number comes up the same, I don't think it does.
It's way off.
Right about four thousand dollars. Thirty-five hundred? Which server, wait. Yeah, that number, the bottom number should equal to forty-two hundred, and then you add on...
Sorry.
You see what I'm saying?
Which one you want?
You had those two makes the four thousand.
I would like...
Then you got a five hundred dollars...
Because it has the trade over the top, the sneeze guard.
You want your cattle, six hundred dollars. They have some tax in it, I'm just saying the numbers don't add up, so I don't know where that moved.
Here's the other page of it, you need that.
There's that much.
That might make it come up.
Everything's expensive.
This is two separate bids.
It has two, it has two.
I just need one of them, I don't need...
That one.
That one's seven.
Well, that one's not in close, isn't it? These figures not adding up.
Is this for one?
Yeah, this is not the element, this kind of...
Yes.
This is, this is adding all of them together.
This is all...
Yeah, that's it.
Does it all equal out to eight thousand one hundred?
Okay, so the first...
She just wants this one, that's three thousand, plus the...
I want item two.
She wants item two, right?
I know it's six hundred dollars one, but that's the one I would really like.
It has the sneeze.
It has the sneeze.
I must have put the bid, because it's kind of confusing how they got it out of line.
Does Adam do it, add up? Same company?
Yes.
So you either get this, this serving camera, this serving camera.
She's got a calculator, she doesn't have it. Well, we wanna move on, come back to that.
We'll come back.
Yeah. I need you to approve the MOU between the England School District and Virtual Arkansas.
Make a motion to approve the MOU between England School District and Virtual Arkansas. Make a motion, motion by Scott G. please say it. Second, by Mr. Trish Karl, this is all the flag, say aye. I oppose.
This is the one that we don't want, we want this one. That's the one that nobody knows.
This is, this is number fifteen. Approve the MOU between England School District, Weber D. Mills, Cova, Early Childhood, Special Education, and Related Services. So I'll make a motion. So, Mr. Adams, please say. Thank you, Mr. Chris Carlos. All of the members say aye? O's.
And on number sixteen, Mr. Scott had already said no, so I will respect his wishes on that.
So I want a motion to reject the MOU between Weber D. Mills and Early Childhood Special Services. Motion by Mr. Chris Carlos, please say. Thank you, Mr. Scott G. on Thursday. Aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
And then we need to pay a bill. We need to approve the vehicle insurance renewal payment of $11,984 to Arkansas Public School Insurance Trust. I think that covers, Angie, doesn't that cover all of our vehicles?
Yes, that's all of our vehicles.
So I'll make a motion to approve vehicle insurance renewal payment of $11,984 to Arkansas Public Schools Insurance Trust. So, so, Mr. Jones, please say. Thank you, Mr. Scott G. on Thursday. Aye? O's five oh.
Okay, and then I need you to approve the quote of $3,056.90 from the 95% group for grades four and five literacy supplies, and this will come out of federal money.
So I'll make a motion to approve the quote for $3,500, or $56.90 for the 95% group for grades four and five literacy supplies. Motion by who? Mr. Adams, please say. Second, Mr. Chris Carlos, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
All right, I need you to approve the quote of $3,178.44 from Wilson Language Learning for grades K-3 phonics curriculum. And that, too, is coming out of federal money.
So I'll make a motion to approve the quote for $3,178.44 from Wilson Language Training for grades K-3 phonics curriculum. Mr. Chris Carlos, please say.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott G. on Thursday. Aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
Um, I'd like to make a recommendation that you all allow me to spend up to $5,000 without board approval. This will keep us from having to have a lot of special call board meetings. If you would do that, I think it would be really to your benefit.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Adams, please say. Thank you, Mr. Chris Carlos. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
All right, thank you. Uh, yes, I would like for y'all to approve my contract. I would like that very much.
Will we approve this one?
Uh, well, it's the guy, the, uh, the.
You have a copy of it?
What do you call those things? The things that you add to the end, I don't know what the.
Performance.
Performance targets, yes, it's here in the back of your folder. I think it's maybe the last item.
The very last page is the performance targets.
Yes.
Part, I think, you have performance.
Yeah.
I think it's state required.
They do, yes. That's part of the learns bill.
Yeah, the state requires you have some type of magic or some type of performance.
And that's probably good, actually. Well, actually, I just kind of looked at other super contracts and sparked heavily from them. Okay, okay, it'll be good.
Do you look at it? Any more space? Did you figure that?
Yes. I think they're ready to look for those targets. Micah, don't let us forget to come back to your salad bar.
And this is standard contract you got from the school board.
Associated?
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion to approve the. So, contract. Motion by Mr. Adams, please say.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott G. on Thursday. Aye?
Aye.
O's.
Thank you so much. And now we have some personnel, some hires.
Thank you.
You want to do this first?
Oh, salad bar, yes.
Of course, you can do it.
Yeah.
The reason why it didn't add up is right here. It says two each. These are the foldable things where the kids can set their tray to fill it. That's only the price for one, so that's why it's not adding up, because you have to have two, one for each side.
So what's the total? What does it mean the total price?
That is the total.
Which one?
The very bottom, the $8,000.
That is correct.
We're putting broccoli on the salad.
Oh, my God.
That's lunchtime broccoli, too, good, too.
That's what's taxed and everything.
I was gonna say, is it the sales tax case? I don't think so.
Sometimes I get it with that.
Yeah, later on, I don't think so.
Just making a motion.
Just like close tax. On your motion, just like close tax.
I would say, I make a motion. Approve the purchase of the Amco equipment. Serving camera for a amount of $8,000. $36 plus associated tax.
Thank you, Mr. Scott G., please say. Thank you, Mr. Chris Carlos. All of the members say aye? O's five oh.
We ready to move to the, all right. Uh, we would like to move Danielle Williams to PK Director, and that would add 10 days to her contract, so I would like to ask you to approve those 10 days.
Those 10 days we pay out here, they just.
Thank you, Mr. Scott G., please say. Chris Carlos, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
Charles Chatten is going to be an assistant football coach, so we need to approve his stipend for assistant senior football and assistant junior football.
Thousand per.
Thousand per?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion. Mr. Jones, please say. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
Okay, and we want to hire, say her first name for me.
Xavier.
Xavier Brooks as LPN. She'll be the high school nurse.
Make a motion to approve Mrs. Brooks as a high school nurse. Motion by Chris Carlos, please say. Thank you, Mr. Joey Adams. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.
And we would like to hire Deidra Harris as a high school parapro. She has all of her requirements, except she does have a pending exam she needs to pass. So we would need to hire her with the caveat that she's got to pass the stats.
Make a motion. So, move, motion by Mr. Jones, please say. Thank you, Mr. Adams. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
O's five oh. Make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Chris Carlos, please say. Thank you, Mr. Scott G. on Thursday. Aye?
Aye.
O's five oh.